We will turn now to proposed motion number 2018-0274. That's item seven on your agendas, which is a motion which would confirm the appointment of members of our Decennial Charter Review Commission pursuant to section 800 of the King County Charter. In your packets, colleagues, there is a committee questionnaire and responses to basic questions, which should give you a general idea of what each person's interest in this work is. And we have a number of folks here, and I think we're going to have two panels. Mac, do you want to do a setup on this for us as our staff?
I said it all.
I said it all. Uh-oh. All right. Well, as the first set of five come up, I will note that this is the 50th anniversary of the King County Charter that was first adopted by voters in 1968, taken effect in May of 1969. It's had some remodeling over the years, particularly after the merger with Metro in about 1993, where we added some of our regional committees, because the municipality of metropolitan Seattle had those municipal powers, metropolitan powers under state code. At least a couple of them were activated. But I would also note that our region is growing at 2.2 million people, 39 cities. It's complex, complicated, and I think, from my perspective, we're starting to see some strain on this government's ability to respond adequately to regional challenges, particularly and, I think, most acutely, our regional affordable housing crisis is evidence of that. And what I've observed in my short time here is we tend to be, we're too often, it seems to me, governing by one-off inter-local agreements, task forces, special committees, and that's not an efficient way, it seems, sometimes, to be able to address our regional challenges. So I hope that this Charter Review Commission will take a look at our charter and our region as it stands today, and will continue to grow in terms of its complexity and needs, and make sure that we can, if possible, have the right tools in this regional government to address those challenges for our community in the coming decades, or at least maybe for the next 10 years. And, of course, we also serve as a local government to about 250,000 folks in unincorporated rural, but some parts of urban King County, and there may be some work to do there as well. So I would invite up, maybe by self-selection, the first five folks as they're coming up, and also give my colleagues any opportunity that they would wish to share some opening remarks if they would like to do so. Don't see that. All right. And I'm going to ask you to all introduce yourselves, maybe just give a short bio and why you're interested in serving, then we'll see if any members have questions or want to engage in dialogue. Thank you all for being here. Alejandra, would you like to lead off?
Of course. My name is Alejandra Tress. I'm Executive Director for the Municipal League of King County. In addition to having a keen interest in policy analysis and nonpartisan work, I have traditionally also done work with immigrant refugee communities.
And I'm Toby Nixon. I currently serve on the Kirkland City Council, previously served in the Washington State Legislature as a representative from the 45th District. And I really am looking forward to this. When I was in student government in high school, I rewrote the Constitution of our student government. That was one of the first things I did. And I have always loved digging into these structural issues, and so I look forward to working with everyone on seeing how we can improve the King County Charter.
Hi, I'm Kenan Williams. I'm an attorney and partner with the law firm Inslee Best, and also a member of the Washington State Bar Foundation Board. I've served on a number of different community committees, and my interest in this is basically efficiency and good government. I note that, as Councilmember Dombowski noted, that there was, you know, seems to be some inefficiencies, and that might have something to do with that. I think we have over 160 special purpose districts in this county alone, and then you add that on to the various cities, and then the legal hoops that everybody has to go through each time we approve a 911 ballot, we do flood control, anything like that. These are regional issues that need to be more simplified and directed towards individuals and the people. Thank you.
I'm Louise Miller.
Not familiar.
Former member.
Are you off the council?
Yeah. See, that's the problem.
Here all the time.
Exactly. About six months after I retired in 2001, I was on, you know, I was chairing the regional water quality, et cetera, et cetera, and I've been doing things like that ever since. Two different projects in the last few months. So I think maybe I might be the Lois Noor of the commission, because everybody keeps saying, "Well, wait a minute, didn't you do this 10 years ago?" Lois and I actually live in the same building now, so people get us confused. I was, came from the Legislature to the County Council as we were transitioning and taking over Metro responsibilities. So I was a member of a council of 13 members, and the growth now compared to the size of our responsibility then is huge. So I have concerns about that. And also, I realize that, over the number of years that we have worked on, quote, "growth management," GMA, we have found that promises and maybe legislative thinking of, "Well, we'll take care of the problem of helping counties do their work with infrastructure." We'll find, we'll take care of that later, and the problem is, we haven't been able to get them to give us the ability to pull in the resources we need. Your budget is still totally lopsided to the criminal justice side. When you look at the pie chart, you see how much of the general fund goes to that. So it's a concern to me that we won't be able to keep our infrastructure up, and that we need to have the authority and the ability to bring in the resources that are needed. So I think that's a major problem, that maybe we can help a little bit with the Charter.
Thank you. Pull that microphone right up to you there. There you go.
Hi, my name is Nat Morales. I am currently the organizing director for an organization called Front and Centered. As a once undocumented immigrant from Mexico, I think this opportunity to serve on this commission is important, not just for the county, but I think our country as a whole. It has been my mission since moving to King County from rural Tennessee to bring the perspective of community, of immigrants, of refugees, of my brothers and sisters in the movement. And I think that this opportunity will be sufficient enough for bringing the voices of community to the table. I think when we're looking at the, at our infrastructure, when we're looking at who is making the decisions here in King County, here in Seattle in particular, I think we oftentimes don't include the most marginalized, and so it will be my mission, and it'll be my distinct honor to be able to do that while serving on this commission.
Very good. Thank you. Well, thank you for those introductions and comments. Turn it open to councilmembers' questions or comments at this time. Councilmember Lambert, would you like to start?
Okay. I'd be happy to. So it's great to see so many of you. I've seen all of you before here doing great things, so thank you for bringing that expertise again to help us. So I think, what do you think, you mentioned earlier about the different taxing districts. What do you think about the different taxing districts that we could do to streamline some of that?
I assume, Councilmember Lambert, you're directing that question towards me, since I had mentioned the 161 different taxing districts. Right now, there has been, if you follow the Growth Management Act, there has actually been some policy statements whereby some of the taxing districts should actually merge, consolidate, and things like that. We also have, you know, within the county, certain countywide taxing districts. There needs to be some form of legislation that would, I guess, incentivize further the consolidation of special purpose districts that are serving regional areas, because right now, there appears to be, in my mind, of serving special purpose districts, the desire to maintain local control even when the local control doesn't necessarily benefit the citizens. But there's obstacles in that. There have been a couple of minor legislative changes out there that will make it a little bit different, make it easier, but still, there isn't the incentive to regionalize. And part of that has to do with effects of labor law, effects of local control, things like that. So I think it would be important to look at ways that the county could, as an umbrella agency, move and consolidate and maybe bring those services under, much like it did with Metro.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up? This is a conversation, or are these just questions?
I'm not sure the difference there, but you're welcome to proceed as you wish, as long as you don't abuse our witnesses, which I know. And I don't think Mr. Williams is going to let you do it.
None of these am I worried about painting. So, anyway, I think you have a good point. My concern is, as, you know, a member of many boards and commissions, that the number of expertise, for instance, I don't know how to run a hospital, I also do not know how to run a fire district. I could probably administer it, but I don't know whether you need more of this kind of chemical or that kind of chemical. So I'm glad there are firemen that know this chemical, or firepeople that know this is the chemical used for this, and that's this, and the ratios. So that part, I think we need other experts, and I don't know if they report to us, so that we're doing all the overhead, but the one area that we do have a problem is that nobody has the authority inside the millage rate to decide who gets more millage, and what do we do if that knocks off a junior taxing district. So I think one of the considerations I like to throw out is somebody should have, whether it's us or somebody, probably us, have the ability so that if somebody wants to increase their taxing rate by 10 cents, but that knocks off three other taxing districts, that we have some ability to say, "No, that isn't going to work." So that, for me, is a part that needs to be fixed.
Interestingly enough, and I don't want to digress too far on ad valorem taxes, but interestingly enough, special purpose districts, really, they make the levy request to the county. The county is the actual one that levies the taxes. All they do is make the request. And depending on what county you're in, certain counties exercise the power of levying a little bit differently than King County does. King County is pretty much, we ask for it and we give it to you, unlike certain other counties that actually exercise a great deal of oversight. Because, remember, the process is, we make, the special purpose districts make levy requests, and then the county approves that levy. So I don't know if there needs to be another layer involved in the county charter that would be able to balance that out and take those things into consideration. That's a big political issue. As you mentioned, the statute already addresses the priorities between senior taxing districts, junior taxing districts. That's a very interesting conversation, and obviously, it's something to have, that you're going to really have to work through. The other point that I wanted to make is, is that I think it's also important to separate operational issues from policy. A lot of what you were describing was operational issues, and I'm going to be the last person in the world to tell a fireman how to put out a fire. But at the same time, I think that there's an appropriate spot for you all in determining regional services.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you, and thanks for your comments on special purpose district reform. It's something that I've been interested in, worked on some over the last decade or so. It's such an antiquated tax system, and it's been built on layers upon layers upon layers without a whole lot of regard to the layer, previous layer, and it's kind of a mismanaged mess. We see it most particularly when we run into levy suppression issues, where junior taxing districts get suppressed, and that's happened, and where that junior taxing district literally has to pay the more senior taxing district not to levy its rate, which is the same thing as burning money for the junior taxing district. So I'd like to work with you on those issues, and I think it needs to interface also with the state legislature in terms of how we prioritize those taxing districts, and how in the world fire districts get close to suppression sometimes, and hospital districts. I mean, that's just crazy. History hasn't taught us anything. It's taught us this, that we're going to have a recession. It might be in two years, it might be five years, possibly eight years, but it's going to happen, and so we need to reform that. And I'd like to work with you in advance of it coming before the voters in the council. I want to say very generally, the Charter Review Commission is a very important process, and it was really very necessary every 10 years, it really should be every five, but that's a lot of work, to kind of clean house and to reorganize the way that we, fine-tune the way that we run as a government very broadly. And so we put our brightest minds at this table here, and I can say that about all of you. My nominee, Sean Kelly, is the mayor of Maple Valley, and he's very, very, works very closely with the Thomas School District, and I hope the council approves him as well. But these are really fine folks. It's a lot of work we're asking you to do, but we appreciate it very much. And I have found that working, the Charter Review Commission, working with council members as that process moves along yields a better result than if it's done in isolation. So just encourage that. Appreciate your willingness to work, and look forward to working with you on special purpose district reform. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Balducci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being willing to serve on the Charter Commission. It's a, it's a, it's going to be a bit of work. We appreciate you bringing all your expertise. One thing I've been thinking a lot about lately, and I noticed in many of the responses to the questions, is how do we effectively work as a region to address regional challenges? County is the regional government, but we don't have all the authority and the responsibility here required to address effectively some of our biggest regional challenges from transportation, homelessness, affordable housing, economic development. When we talk about where does, where do jobs go, and how do we, you know, lift all boats around the county, we really need to be able to work effectively with cities and with the state. And I, it's just a topic that's on a lot of, in a lot of meetings these days, so I would be really interested to hear anybody's thoughts now, or when you get to meeting, about how do we structure ourselves so that we can work as effectively as possible and challenge ourselves and each other while recognizing the authority and role of each level of government? If it was easy, somebody to solve it by now, but, you know, jump right in.
I will say, one of my interests, actually, in being involved with reviewing the Charter is not only really looking at the policy analysis pieces, but really having an overview of why I didn't actually, like, some of the questions we were asked beforehand, I thought, you know, in some ways, we really can't answer those until we do, like, a deep dive on how our county has really changed. And not only how our county has changed in terms of demographics and challenges, but also how government has changed in the last 10 years, about how we should be working together, how we should really be having communities in leadership in ways that I think didn't happen as regularly 10 years ago. And, you know, I have worked with other regional parts of the country, and Seattle has attended, Seattle and King County have some really good models they could be looking at in terms of a regional approach that does not seem to be as present here.
I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
And I'll just note, it's a longstanding tradition that the Municipal League be involved. They helped get our 1968 charter passed, and of course, a few decades before that, reformed the Seattle City Government Charter. So we're really pleased that the Municipal League has a representative here, and hope that we can rely on your broader organization as well, and its skill set and resources to be a part of the process.
Be happy to.
Thanks.
I think one of the things we forget, and part of our job will be to educate the community as we go along, because the reason we have so many special purpose governments in the West, and it's mainly in the West, the larger West, is because we didn't trust the feds at all. So we had to have our own little pockets of a commission for this and a board for that, and that's sort of how we got. And I actually was an elected member of a special purpose district, i.e. a water sewer district, separately elected, et cetera. And I agree with the idea of the management of what you're doing is one thing, but the governance is another. And I agree that maybe it's time that we quit worrying about being the wild, wild West and get things together, but we'll have to do a real, we'll have to do a lot of educating to the general public, because I always said, if King County on the day stopped everything they do, suddenly, people would realize how many services the county is providing that affect their daily life.
I would just add to that, I think there really can be a litmus test around safety and so on and so forth as part of a 32-house sewer water district on Vashon. I could tell you that we've not always had the greatest water quality standards and so on and so forth, and it's difficult when it's volunteers in the neighborhood running it, and there is a point of professionalizing that process.
Very good. Other questions or comments for this panel? Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if you are in the position yet to be able to answer this question, but if any of you have any thoughts, I'd appreciate hearing. What, going into this process, what do you think is the number one challenge for King County?
I think that, this is Kenan Williams again, I think that when I look at the Charter, and I look at what's going on in the county, is you need to be a little bit more nimble. There's a lot of issues, and the world's changing rapidly, and it seems like, maybe it's just because I'm getting older, but it seems like as, as things keep changing, it seems like the pace of change keeps getting faster and faster. And when I read the Charter, I, I felt like, to some degree, it was antiquated in a way. It had a lot of, a lot of restraints on action. And I think that in order for the county to be able to address the issues such as homelessness, whether you call it homelessness, affordability, or streamlining government, it's going to have to be a little bit more nimble, because it's very confusing from a consumer's perspective or taxpayer perspective, when you have to call eight different places in order to get an answer, and you're, and you're in the same house. You know, it's not like you're going different places, but you're, there's a lot of different layers of government here that's very confusing to, to most people. And I think that being able to streamline it and make it easier for people to understand their government and how they work and get responses is going to be a challenge for everyone.
Very good. Let's see, Toby, you wanted to?
Yeah. You know, in reviewing the Charter, I really don't see structural issues in the Charter itself that would, you know, by changing that would make a huge difference, because I see the biggest challenge facing the county as a sustainable revenue. And the limitations are not in the Charter, the limitations are in state law, what, what the county is allowed to do. And so it'll be interesting if we go through this process and we end up not making many changes to the Charter, but giving you all a long list of requests to the state legislature. And I don't know if that's actually within our scope to do, but that
I hope so.
That may be one of the things that we end up doing.
Thank you, yeah. I want to just echo and reinforce from my perspective those comments, that there may be some state-based changes we need to be able to effectuate a contemporized, contemporaneous Charter.
And I would, sorry, just real quickly, I also want to say that I think one of the biggest challenges right now in the county is the lack of equity when it comes to policy that is passed, when it comes to looking at who is in leadership positions, when it looks to, when it looks at how decisions are made and who they're being made by. I think that everyone, obviously on the council, and everyone who represents King County, is capable of doing so, and, I mean, we appreciate everything, all the time that council members have given, and your efforts thus far. And I do think that there is still a lack of representation. I think there, when we look at the county, when we look at how it has changed, and when we look at how it will continue to change, we need to make sure that government, governing bodies and decision-makers are reflective of the people who are most impacted by those decisions. So I think when we look at how equity is applied, and that lens is applied to governance, I think that's still a challenge for King County.
I, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to go? No. I would certainly agree with Natalie. I would also say, you know, not to be glib about this, but how do we look at this as an opportunity as well as a challenge? I mean, King County, I think, is known for innovation, our region is known for innovation and wanting to find unique solutions, and I've, you know, had a chance to work with the council, and I know that's also a desire there as well. So the question is, how can we create litmus tests and the constructs of equity throughout our work that we could be striving way beyond just tinkering with things, but having that really reflect what we would like to see in the county?
All right. In the interest of time, Councilmember Roberts, can we move to the next panel, or do you have a specific question here?
For this panel, if it's okay.
Sure.
It was triggered by something that our panelist, Toby Nixon, said, you know, one example of that's the roads formula. Roads formula is broken, and when you tell a constituent, "The reason that I can't fix your road, as much as I would like to, and as much as the 43% of the King County roads employees that got laid off, that have no job, would love to be out fixing your road, but because of the formula at the state, we don't have the money for that," it's mind-boggling to them. "What do you mean you don't have the money for that? What do you mean the formula's broken? How did that work? Why did that happen? Why hasn't been fixed?" All perfectly legitimate questions. So I think, you know, having something that it has to be sustainable is really important. You know, one of the things that we do fairly well is we acknowledge we're a regional government, but the thing we don't do as well is acknowledge we're the local government. And I think it's really important as we go forward, because if they were a city, they would be the second-largest city in the state, and yet, they have no mayor, they have no city council, they have us, but not all of us are actively engaged in what goes on out there. And sometimes, it's a difficult dichotomy. And so I think putting the fact that this, this section of our county needs to fully be represented is really going to be important. And hopefully, we'll have the Department of Local Services, but what should that department be able to do to make it more empowered as a city, and not just sucked up into being, you know, part of a regional government? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nixon, I know you've got to go soon. Just maybe if I can, one final question, since I think you may be our only city council member, although we have the mayor of Maple Valley who will be serving, but you're here today. A big part of our work involves partnering with the 39 cities in the county who are the direct service providers to most of our residents, and we have some structures via the Regional Policy Committee and the Regional Transit Committee to integrate our governance. But do you have thoughts on how that process might be, or those relationships might be improved? Because I think there is still occasionally some tension between the county and the cities on the issues facing our region, just in terms of how we address them and getting them done.
Well, I think that the current system is actually pretty effective, with the Sound Cities Association having representation on all the regional committees, or nearly all of the regional committees, and the SCA Public Issues Committee, which I serve on, and the, and the board, being able to work on consolidating positions amongst the cities in communicating with the county. I think it's been pretty effective in making sure that the interests of cities are addressed by the county. So, no, I don't have anything on the top of my mind right now in terms of what would be changed, but I certainly look forward to the process and considering concerns and proposals that others might raise.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. I want to echo Councilmember Dunn's suggestion that as you do your work, that you make time, make time to interview and dialogue with members of the council, the executive, or other separately elected officials. I'm sure you'll outline a process or work plan to do that as you get going, and we are providing staff from both the legislative and executive branches, and hopefully, we'll get you a lawyer. Do we have, Mac, do we have a lawyer for him? We got a lawyer for him. Okay. You're going to need that.
We don't want too many of them.
No, no. Kenan is not allowed to practice law. But thank you for being here. We'll expect to move, if you have to depart, expect to move this motion forward today, and we'll invite up the next panel. You guys have cleared a lot of the heavy, heavy brush for them.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Welcome, and we'll, you guys saw how we did that, and we'll let you do brief introductions and a little bit of background of why you're interested in serving, then have a little dialogue, and we'll start on the left, all right.
Good morning. I'm Beth Sigal, and I guess the thing that the Charter and I have in common is we both just turned 50, so. I didn't get a committee panel thing, I just had cake. I am a, the founder of a nonprofit, ESET Education Network, that focuses on education policy, primarily with suburban Seattle school districts, but also statewide issues. I have a lot of experience also representing foster children in the, actually, right here in King County Courthouse, also with a lot of policy and hands-on experience, helping the disabilities, families and students with disabilities and special education policy specifically. Also, I have been very involved in overcrowding issues in our school districts, campaigning actively for too many losses and a few wins for school bonds. And with all of these domains, I can bring a user perspective to these discussions, whether it's people with disabilities trying to access public transportation, trying to explain to voters what a bond is and why we have to keep voting them up or down. we have to keep voting them up or down. And also, as a 10-year resident of unincorporated King County, just the issues that you face, trying to raise a family and go to work every day from Novelty Hill area, and the traffic and issues and things like that that we face.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Jeff Natter. I'm Executive Director of Pacific Hospital Preservation Development Authority, which is the city-chartered but county-wide PDA centered up on Beacon Hill, with the stewards of the Pacific Hospital campus. And we use our funding to provide services and grants to people in King County who are addressing health equity issues. We've worked with quite a few organizations. I'm really excited to see members of the council again. I've been having one-on-one meetings with several of you, and it's great to see you again. And thank you for welcoming me here. I've been doing health and social services in King County now for about 30 years, and I still feel like a newcomer and in a honeymoon phase with this county. Just quickly, last week, we were in, my staff and I were in North Bend to meet with Encompass, which works with small children. And we passed a herd of elk by the side of the highway. And one of the reasons I would like to really work on this county charter, and feel very honored to be able to do so, is I would still like this county to be a place where we can have herds of elk in the county, under the shadow of Mount Si, and have world-class opera, and have competitive sports teams like the Seattle Storm. And I also think it's really important for us, because the charter's only reviewed every 10 years, to look at the ways in which practice may differ from actual policy in the past 10 years. I think we all know, in terms of administration and management, we often engage in practice that might be different than the written word, and some of it's often for the right reasons. And I'd like to make sure the charter can reflect that. And I really want to work with the council themselves, as the stakeholders of this charter, to see what your opinions are and what your ideas are about how we can make effective changes. Thanks.
Thank you. Morning, Brooks.
Hi, Brooks Salazar. I'm an executive board member of the King County Labor Council, representing about 150,000 workers, and also the Washington Federation of Public Employees, representing about 45,000 state workers. The reason I wanted to be part of this committee, which I was really shocked when Joe actually nominated me, was I really do want you guys to have that nimbleness, to actually attack some of the problems that we have in our community. And also, it's just to make sure that workers are a stakeholder in our charter, because, you know, those are our voters, and those are the constituents that you guys represent. And that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Heller. I'm a lawyer with an office in Burien, and I live in Normandy Park. I don't know much about municipal law. The other lawyer knows far more about it than me, obviously. I do know quite a bit about history and the Constitution, which I think is how I got nominated. It seems to me, I agree with Mr. Nixon, the biggest problem the county has is it doesn't have enough money to do what it needs to do. And I'm not sure how much of that is a structural problem within the charter. I think it is more of a state problem. So as someone else suggested, we might come forth with some suggestions regarding what the state ought to be doing to change that. Someone mentioned, and I'm well aware of this as a lawyer who goes to court, that the court system, the justice system, is taking up a huge amount of the budget. And it's, in my opinion, absurd that Washington is the last state in the Union, after even Alabama and Mississippi, in state funding for its court system. I mean, the county is paying all this money to prosecute people in the name of the state. Does not make sense to me. There's been talk about regional solutions, and I agree that we need regional solutions, but the region is bigger than King County. And I think that's something we need to think about as well. Take a quick example, if we, if King County did something that caused homeless people, instead of ceasing to be homeless, to move to Everett or Tacoma, problem has not been solved, it's just been moved. And I think there's a number of problems. As the region grows, and as people leave King County because of the housing prices, they're moving to Snohomish and Pierce Counties. And I think increasingly, these three counties need to be working together. And I'd like to see some structures that can make that happen. And if, for example, all three counties went to the legislature and said, "We need this or that," that's a lot of votes, and it might have some impact down there. So I'm looking forward to getting up to speed and working on this. Thank you.
Very good.
Hello, I'm Michael Hirschenson. I think I bring a perspective which is a little bit different from the other panelists I've heard this morning, simply because I have never been involved in government, and have worked primarily in the, in arts and culture in King County. And so, in fact, I suppose the position I once had that had the broadest sweep was being the Director of the Museum of History and Industry. So I've had a different, a different way of looking at things. I'm now retired, so my history activities are focused really narrowly. It seems, you know, as I get older, my life gets more local. So I'm now President of the Queen Anne Historical Society, which is very narrow, but still touches on a wide range of issues that affect the county. I'm also very active in bicycling in Seattle and King County. And, you know, I'm sort of the old man out in Seattle neighborhood greenways, but I'm very interested in finding solutions to density through the reduction of our intense use of automobiles. And I think that King County, because of metro, is really very much in the lead, insofar as all of that's concerned. And the other thing about bicycle riding is that you get to see history where it's happening, that's one thing. And the other thing is you get to explore the whole county. I rode two weeks ago 67 miles from Marymore to North Bend and back. And it's really a great opportunity to get to know what's happened. Oh, that's the same Mount Index experience, Mount Si, was it, in North Bend? But it was really beautiful. But, so, you get to know the county in ways that's really different, a kind of an intimacy with the landscape that is something that I hope we can bear in mind as we explore how the organization of the county can be improved. And I'm happy to hear, having read the charter, I'm happy to hear that there could indeed be a focus on establishing protocols for approaching the state to change the way things are operated.
Thank you all very much. Members, questions or comments to any of these panel members? Councilmember Valducci?
I think that you heard our questions before, and some of you went and answered them. And I really appreciated the comment about regionalism being bigger than just the borders of King County. I think the only thing I would offer is, I do think that there is, we are bumping up against the limitations of our current structure within King County to work regionally effectively at our different layers of government to address our problems. And I think we need to kind of solve that and work with our neighbors. I mean, I think these are ands, not ors. So it's just more of an observation, but I really appreciate your, I wanted to make sure not to not ask you the question. You're welcome to answer it again if you like. But thank you all very, very much for giving your time and your expertise to this process. It seems like a really high-powered group we have here, and it's going to be very interesting to see what you do. I do want to share just a, my very first run for office was for a charter commission in Bellevue, and I won that race. So I've been where you've been before, but the charter itself, the vote to establish the charter commission failed, so we never had to do anything. So you're going to go further down this road than I ever got to go.
Okay. Councilmember Von Reckbauer.
I can ask a question after the speaker.
Okay.
Question, proceed.
Okay, very good. Are there any other, Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you. So I'm glad you were from Marymore to Mount Si, because that's all my district, and all 1,007 square miles of it, and it is beautiful. But it doesn't have a lot of buses, and so, and biking's long, I'm glad you can do that. So there's a problem with roads out there. And there are problems that are unique because of the amount of water, and the number of trees, and the distance, and many things. How do you feel that you will be able, and this is for anybody, to really be able to address the uniqueness, or get to know the uniqueness outside of the urban core?
Oh, well, I'll just respond directly. One of the things that didn't come up in this conversation were environmental issues surrounding the county. And so much of the county, in terms of square feet, is actually rural, as compared to what we have in the urban core. And so I think that we'll have to take the environment and the impact on the environment into account, and trying to see ways that we can expand the purview of the county. I think there's a real balance to be achieved between, you know, providing access to where people have to work and shop, and protecting the environmental quality of the area. I think the Growth Management Act had a huge effect. It's really been successful. At the same time, when you ride from Marymore to North Bend, it used to be, as soon as you left Marymore, you were in rural King County. That was the first time I did those rides, not that long ago, like 15 years ago. I used to love getting out of Marymore, and now you have to crank up these suburban hills till you actually get to rural, the rural part of the county. So it's very important to bear in mind that we need to understand that while there are regional problems, and maybe social and political, there are also huge environmental questions that need to be taken into consideration. I don't have an answer.
So, most people do not know that 61% of this county is owned by government, or open space, or has an easement. So there's a lot of issues because government owns. And we haven't quite got our noxious weeds under control. We haven't got a lot of things under control that need to be under control. And I think people don't realize it's 61%. Does anybody else want to answer that question?
Sure, I'd like to jump in, thanks for the opportunity. I think my role, and I hope our role, as the Charter Review Commission, is not necessarily to solve each of those problems, but to help create a framework that allows the county council and the citizens of King County to address those problems. I mean, obviously, all of us come with real strong concerns about certain issues, if not a whole variety of issues, mine being healthcare for underserved. I don't think the Charter Review Commission can improve healthcare for the underserved. I wish we could. I wish we all could. But we're going to have to work together, and I hope that our role as a commission is to provide, as I said, that framework that allows the county council to take action to address those issues on a more granular level.
Just as a semicolon to, these are all really great answers, and the issues that you're raising are spot on. I'm also a lawyer, and in reading through the charter, it wasn't jumping out to me what specific provisions are, hindrances or barriers, but that is where I'm going to absolutely tap into your all's expertise, to say, "Look, you know, if we have these challenges, are these things that can actually be addressed by the charter, or do we need to go to Olympia, or something else?" To follow up, especially on what Councilmember Dunn said earlier, in the process of whether it was campaigning for a bond, or trying to help a foster child get services in South King County, and all different types of advocacy I've done, one of the things that becomes really clear, just from the lawyer perspective, is exactly what he said, which is, we have layer upon layer upon layer upon layer upon layer of fixes that address a specific problem, but weren't necessarily global, just because the reality is, whether it's helping somebody take the bus, or making sure waste is picked up, or whatever things have to happen. And so perhaps, this will be an opportunity to fix some global, to make some global changes that could at least streamline or make things a little better.
I just wanted to add, I grew up in a very, very small town. It was back east, but a good analog would be Omak, that kind of a place, that kind of weather. And though it was east, we did have layers and layers of government. In my town, which had 5,000 people, there was both a village board and a town board that met separately and made their own rules. So I'm somewhat familiar with that. But I understand your concerns, and I'll just tell you quickly, I was just back there visiting. My family still owns a very small parcel of land. We have some beavers who moved in a couple of years ago, and at first, they were cute, and now they're taking over the place, and we're not sure what to do about it. And so, that's part of the issue, that county is both very urban and very rural in different places, and sometimes, they need different things. In my overlong essay that I wrote in response to the questions, though it didn't make it into the...
It was a very interesting response. You might take a look at the questionnaire.
Thank you. I suggested that perhaps we should look at restructuring the council. Maybe it should be larger, maybe it should be different, maybe there should be some at-large seats. That could be, if there are groups that are not being adequately represented, or perspectives that are not being adequately represented, that could be a way to address that. I realize that's a pretty touchy subject, but it might be something for us to study and think about.
Councilmember Dunn.
On that point, I appreciate your courage in coming forth and saying that. It's, of course, been done before. We all, or some of us lived through that, and having to campaign against the person that represents this district now, because ultimately, the charter was struck in 13 to 9.
You said larger.
Yeah, I heard that as well. We hear what we want to hear up here. Here's the point I'm trying to make. It is so critical that this board, the commission, remain independent, and I mean really independent, and to the point where, like I said, you know, work closely with members of the council as you shape a particular proposal, but at the end of the day, you're going to have to take the tough votes. Let's talk about special purposes reform. Do you think fire commissioners are going to like the idea of giving away their jurisdiction, or sewer district commissioners, or irrigation district, or whatever it is? There are so many. You're just going to have to take the tough choices. And I appreciate the independent spirit by which that was said. And so, regardless, if I'm up here griping in a couple of years about something, remember what I'm saying now, you need to be independent. Thanks.
Councilmember Coles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't have much time, I'm aware of it. I did ask the earlier panel about what they thought might be the greatest challenge, and one of the panelists thought maybe a more appropriate question would be, what are the, what's the greatest opportunity that you have before you, as being a member of the commission? Would you like to just give like a 30-second response? Any of you?
Well, I think we've talked a lot about managing growth. I'd like to frame it as managing change. The nature of the county, in terms of our demographics and our population, in the past 10 years, has been dramatic. The nature of the urban versus rural balance has been demographic. 10 years ago, Bellevue was not Bellevue, as it is today, and much of Seattle is not what it is today. So I think that's a great opportunity for us, is to be able to recognize what has changed in the past 10 years, and hopefully, make sure that the voices who are the individuals behind that change, whether it's environmental, social, health-related, political, are respected in the upcoming charter.
Okay, thank you very much. We, obviously, when you have 23 members who are nominated to commission, it's tough to get folks scheduled. We appreciate everyone, all nine of you that were able to attend today. I sent out the questionnaire to help give members some insight into the nominees, especially those that were unable to attend, and we got pretty good responses on those. Mac, do you know how many out of the 23 responded to the questionnaire?
15 or so.
15 or so, okay. 16 so far. I did hear from Senator Joe Fain, who was courteous enough to let me know that he would not be here today, because number two child was expected to maybe be delivered. I don't know how that's going, but Councilmember Von Reckbauer might be able to.
I would say right now, Chair, number two child was just born.
Okay.
And I just got a text from Joe, and mother and son are doing well. It appears to be, it's eight pounds, 10 ounces, born at 9:57, otherwise, he would have been here. Their mother and baby are very healthy at Sweetie's Hospital.
Will he yield to a question?
Boy or girl, sorry? Boy.
Boy, okay, second boy, all right.
Not yet.
All right. And also, Sung Yang indicated that he wanted to be here, but was not able to join. I don't think I heard from other folks, but I wanted to pass along those items. So, Councilman Von Reckbauer.
I just had a procedural question. It has nothing to do with the panel here, which I'm very appreciative of. And I nominated Senator Fain, and I feel that he, because he worked here at the county for 10 years, both for Julia Patterson as well as myself, it brings a really good perspective. I couldn't help but notice that, looking at the sheet, that Councilmember Dunn, Councilmember Valducci, Councilmember Lambert, and Councilmember Von Reckbauer all have one nominee, whereas other districts have large. Is the vote weighted? Or I'm just curious as to how this process developed, because it seems the suburban districts, Councilmember Valducci, myself, Lambert, Dunn, all seem to be having representative by one person on this rather large panel. I was just curious what, how this was set up.
Okay, that's a good question. And I see that we're going to get some help from our legal counsel to perhaps give us some background on the extensive and long process that is undertaken between the executive and legislative branch to get these nominees here.
Well, good morning. I am Mike Hoover, counsel to the council, and the question was, is the weight, are the votes on the charter commission weighted? They are not. It is one person, one vote. It is one person, one vote, when they actually serve, because ultimately, what they are doing is providing recommendations for you to act upon or not act upon.
I took that question as rhetorical, but the underlying point was, the question was, what's been the process that's led to this panel?
That's correct. I'm going to answer that, and if I may, I'm going to turn it over to the very knowledgeable Mac Nicholson on how the actual, like, the actual selections in front of you were chosen.
Thank you, Mac Nicholson, staff. Been working with this Charter Review process since 2016, end of 2016. The charter requires 15 members, one from each district, or at least 15 with at least one from each district. So the way we kind of split it with the exec staff is reached out to council members for a recommendation from their district, which would cover the one from each district. The executive side made appointments equal in number-
Okay.
With one additional appointment to kind of not, to get to 23 total. And so, from the list of folks that were nominated or appointed by the council, you'll see we end up with at least one in each district, and then the executive side went through kind of their internal process to end up with the folks that they appointed, which I think is why you see the-
But Chair, it appears to me, just looking at the raw number, that not all districts are created equal. I mean, with due respect, you know, Bellevue, Councilmember Balducci's larger district over there, and compared to some others, it just doesn't seem like there was a good communication between the council and the executives to make sure that all these districts were well represented. This does not look like a well-balanced panel. It looks like a very distinguished panel, but a well-balanced panel, when you see the five suburban districts have one person. Dave has two people, whereas other districts have one, two, three, six, five people. It appears to me, Mr. Chair, that we could have done a much better job spreading the burden and the opportunity to represent King County.
I think that, I concur that that is an ongoing issue, Councilman Ron Reichbauer, in our major board appointments. As someone who represents both Seattle and non-Seattle, one-third of my district being in the city and two-thirds being out, I am sympathetic to your point. I think the chart could be, I wouldn't say misleading, but not tell the entire story. For example, position number 11, William Iberschaff, is listed as King County Council, District One. Public Sector Waste Manager Kirkland, I mean, he was a former mayor of Norton Duval, and I don't believe Will lives in District One, he may work there. So I think the chart, while giving a clue, I think to some degree, at least that is an example that's jumping out at me as maybe not indicative entirely of the geographic balance here, but we obviously could not control the executive side nominees. We did our balancing here with mostly one member per, but I think there were a couple of council add-ons as well. Councilmember Upthegrove?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to pick up where you ended. I was worried if Mac could clarify kind of how we got to 23. Each council member I know was asked to nominate someone for possible appointment. So that was nine. And then we, if I recall, the executive recommended more than nine.
Correct.
And I thought it was 10, and maybe I'm mistaken.
Eleven.
Okay, it was 11. And then, so we had a process, we empowered our chair to nominate two additional. That got to 22.
And there was a discussion amongst one of the council members and the exec surrounding concerns over one of the nominees, and that was kind of worked out between that particular council member and the exec side, and resulted in the additional appointee that is kind of a part exec, part council member individual who was appointed.
Okay. Thanks.
Next question.
Councilmember Balducci.
Looking at the chart, can you, Mac, just remind us which of these position, by position number, were appointed by the council?
Yes, if you'll allow me to just grab my-
Yeah, thanks.
The panel, you may step down, and, well, we have our, as you can, following up on Councilmember Dunn's comment, you can see why independence of the panel will be so important, because now here, we're wanting to make sure that there's been fairness in the process. Mac, why don't you come to the table here? And Carolyn, is this something that you could add some information or value to as well as a participant in this, or not really?
He's really-
Max the one, all right.
So I believe the position numbers, if you'll give me just one second, because I don't have them listed by the 1 through 23, yeah, on that particular green sheet.
It's the first green page.
Would it be easier to look at page 41?
Yeah.
So, I'll just run through real quick. Position number seven, and these are the council appointees. Position number seven-
Three.
Position number three, position number 16, position number 15.
No, he's just going through the position number-
Oh, the chart, I see. Okay, thank you.
Eighteen.
Position number eighteen, right?
Twenty-one.
Right, position twenty-one.
Six.
No, position number six was a executive side appointee. Position number eight-
Seven.
Position number seven.
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying that's seven. I'm doing a running tally. Seven people.
Position twenty-one, I don't know if I already said that one.
One, two, three, four, five.
I'm not tracking on my sheet, but position number fourteen-
Fourteen, correct.
Okay.
Is a council appointment.
Position twelve.
Three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So that's nine plus the extra.
And there should be, position eleven also. We should be at eleven.
How do we end up at eleven?
Nine plus the two council at-large.
What are two council at-la, I thought there was one odd one. Now you're saying two.
Councilmember McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I wasn't done asking. Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, Councilmember McDermott was going to explain, or kind of answer your question.
Oh, going to answer. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I was trying to get you two to look at each other, because Joe was trying to say, I've got the answer.
Sorry, I can't look at him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are nine appointees by council members, and then when the executive had eleven appointees, there was an interest in making sure that the council had an equal number of appointees as the executive branch did. And so I sent out an email to all of the soliciting names and input on making two additional appointments, and based on those responses, made two additional appointments. And that's how the council's seats got to 11.
Mr. Chair. Which are those two?
Alejandra Trace was one.
And Linda Larson.
Give me just a moment, if you would.
Sure.
Or if Mac can help me out.
And Linda Larson.
And Linda Larson, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to make sure it's understood that, at least in my case, for District Four, I had nominated one who was included, and then I was asked for a follow-up because there, most of our selections were white men, very bluntly put, and there was a need for more diversity. So I offered another one as a suggestion, and that's what happened.
I appreciate Councilmember Von Reichbauer's concern. I often also look to district representation, but I think the point that was made by the chair is a good one. There are a number of names on here that, while they have a district number after them, they come with a set of experience and background that makes them good representatives for a much broader geography, and I will just, without embarrassing her, point out Louise Miller, who is listed as a District Four person, but throughout much of her career was a District Three, Three person, and clearly has a much broader perspective. And there are a number of people like that on here. I feel that this is a good panel overall, and I am prepared to support it today. I do think that we should remind ourselves also that whatever recommendations come out of this Charter Commission come to the council and the executive, and then we get to vote at the council whether they go forward and are voted on by the voters or not.
Correct. You actually have to vote on all recommendations.
Yes or no, but we get to vote yes or no.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Von Reichbauer.
Just clarification then on the process again.
Yes.
Let's assume, you know, again, because those five members representing suburban King County out of these 23, you know, we have five people, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Fain, Mr. Nixon, and Beth are one, and then we're actually six people representing, the two from Dave's district. Those six people who actually represent or live in South King, or in suburban King County districts, if they decide to come together on issues, are they going to be restricted by a majority vote on this panel from recommending, recommending things that might affect their area?
Well, I'm not sure how the Charter Commission is going to want to vote on these things. I can say previous reports have included both majority recommendations and minority recommendations. So if there were areas where it was a unanimous vote as a recommendation, and then there would be some that were partial recommendations, and then minority recommendations as well.
We have 23 people on this board, six of whom are in, represent rural or suburban areas of King County districts. And those are the districts most affected by King County, with all due respect to my friends in downtown Seattle by our decisions, because our constituents out there are the most affected by King County's decisions. So I'm, until I have confirmation that those six lonely voices from suburban King County are going to be heard, I'm going to vote no. I'm sure it's going to pass, but I just, I feel very disappointed that somebody didn't communicate together to make sure there are more than six votes of the 23 members representing King County, suburban and rural King County. And I, with all due respect to my colleague who talked about the broad experience, I agree with her on that, but nothing like living in your neighborhood, talking, we believe in communities, and if they live there, they're talking to their neighbors at Safeway Store, they're talking at their community clubs. I just think it's incredible that we have six people on a 23-member board that actually are coming from districts that are primarily suburban or rural districts.
Councilmember Lambert.
So, this is going back to like round zero. After hearing what Councilmember, sorry, Von Reichbauer just said, so one-third of the population of this county lives in Seattle, and yet it's about two-thirds of them will be representatives from Seattle. So I get the broad for the nine, and I had said my person was number 28, my three. And I adopted her, but I had actually done number, Will Iberschaff, who is my number three. But anyways, I want to point that out just for clarity. So, but my question has to do with the executive. Is it in the charter that the executive gets to represent, to put that many in? Was that something that we had decided? How did he get to match us and not have it be? I'm fine with him matching us if he picked people from all of our districts, but the fact that he chose them predominantly from Seattle kind of exacerbates the problem outside the county that only Seattle matters. So how did that happen? Is it charter, is it?
So the charter just says the exec appoints, council confirms, and there need to be at least 15 with one from each district, or at least one from each district. As far as how the exec chose his appointees, I would defer to the executive, because I don't know how he did that.
Mac, remind us, who is the executive branch staffer on this?
So there is Kelly Carroll, who has been working with this, and-
Okay, and is Ms. Carroll here?
No.
No, and who else?
And Callie Knight, who came in recently, so I don't know how involved she is.
Over there in the back corner.
Okay, Callie's here.
Yep.
Ms. Knight, would you like to respond to Councilmember Von Reichbauer's issue regarding the geographic diversity of the executive side nominees on behalf of the executive?
I can-
Why don't you come forward if you're going to speak, so we have it on the record?
Councilmembers Knight, Callie- Knight, I work on the external relations team for the exec's office. This is my first time up here. It's really nice to see all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Usually, we do a pretend hazing, but it seems like this is more of a-
Bring it on. Sorry. I am actually coming onto this project new, so I can take your feedback, bring it back to my team in the exec's office, and respond offline, if that works best. I feel not equipped to answer questions about our selection process, because I was not working on this issue when that process was going forward.
That's a reasonable reason. Councilmember Von Reichbauer.
But Chair, do we have to pass this out today, or can we?
We do not.
I would like to have a chance to have a dialogue with the executive, because again, we have 23 members, six of whom are represented by districts. I think if he has that capacity, or we can work together. I like everybody who's been nominated.
Yes.
I just wish everybody would be nominated across the board. We talked about, you know, Supreme Court decisions about representation. I don't see that in this process.
Colleagues, Councilman McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Nicholson, are these appointments, they're being sent to us by the executive. Are they technically all the executive's appointments, and he's taken our recommendation on 11 of them?
Yes, I think that's kind of a fair way of saying it, that the, under the charter, the exec appoints, council confirms. The discussions we had earlier in the process as a way to try to ensure that council had representation and had some input, was to have council members pass along nine or turned into 11 members that the exec would then add to their list of appointees and send over for confirmation.
And has the council always approved or confirmed appointments to the Charter Review Commission?
No. This is, the previous Charter Review Commission recommended a charter provision that was passed by the voters to require council confirmation of Charter Review appointees, and also the ending piece of having the council act on every recommendation in an open public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And if I've got the numbers right from the charter, you said it's at least 15 with nine council members, one from each district, having a representative person?
It's at least 15 with at least one from each council district.
I see. And do they have to reside there?
It's unclear. I guess I would, at this point, kick back to Mr. Hoover, because we did have that discussion about kind of how strict that kind of requirement was, whether it was a residency or-
I bet the charter says. Counsel, it doesn't?
The charter says, hello, Mike Hoover again, county council, council. The charter says from each council district, so it's, it is a little bit ambiguous. You could read it as residing there, it could be representing that, it could be that you are free to appoint somebody from that district that you think will represent that district.
Councilmember Von Reichbauer.
I just want the opportunity to have a chance to talk to some of the members who are being appointed, to make sure that the minority of folks, those six out of the 23 voices will be heard, because they represent, in terms of this district or this county, two-thirds of the county. And I want to make sure that, I'm going to have a chance to talk to some of you individually to make sure there's a respectful process that's going to include the minority as well as the substantial majority who are appointed by the executive.
Thank you. And just one more technical question, if we might, Councilmember Lambert. It was my understanding, as this has been worked for months now, that it was going to be 10 and 10, or at least it would be even. And I will confess to see an odd number, 23, and 11 council, nine plus two at large, that's not even half. So what happened? Why was an understanding that I sort of been reached with, that I- Why, why was an understanding that I sort of been reached with, that I understood had been reached with the executive office, to have a balance of council and executive nominees not here before us?
So if, if I'm understanding the question, why are we at kind of 23 instead of 22?
Yeah.
Where the, where the extra one came from. And I would defer again to that particular council member, who had a, a discussion around kind of some of the appointment and the appointment process. And, and there was a discussion that was reached, or, or a discussion was had between that council member and the exec staff, that resulted in the appointment of a 23rd to the body.
Well, I'll just say, this is a problem when all council members aren't treated the same on these kind of appointments. It can lead to these kinds of challenges and concerns, because, you know, I served before I came here on the redistricting commission with five commissioners, and that was a sensitive topic. There were two nominally Rs., two nominally Ds., and we selected a fifth person as a chair. And one of the rules we adopted, an internal rule related to transparency suggested by Judge Carroll, was if there were contacts from an interested party, a council member, about where a line should be drawn, or, or what precinct should be moved where, that those be disclosed with the entire committee. And that was, I think, of a first-of-its-kind sunshine rule, and it worked pretty well, because every, there wasn't a fear or concern that somebody was gaming the system. And I think what you're seeing here in this dialogue is some concerns about transparency in a panel that is going to recommend changes to the constitution of this government and the structure. And for all of the reasons articulated as well by Councilmember Dunn about independence and the importance of this work, you can, you can see why we care, and why Councilmember Von Reckbauer is raising these procedural concerns about how we got to today on the, on the nominees, without raising any concerns individually about the quality of the nominees before us. He's been very clear, and I think, I think probably all members here agree with that, it's outstanding group of folks. But sometimes where you sit determines where you stand, and maybe from which district you work from might determine where you put your work into on some of these issues. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. So I agree that these are a great list of people, but I am also concerned with what Councilmember Von Reckbauer brought up about the idea that, that happens frequently, is that the people most impacted by our decisions are frequently people that are in the unincorporated area, both urban unincorporated and rural unincorporated. And yet frequently, or like 99% of the time, they have the fewest people there to advocate for whatever is or isn't. So I, just systemically, looking for 10 years from now, you know, maybe saying that, you know, whatever the numbers are, that the executive needs to, you know, choose the people he chooses along with each of us, where he would say, there's somebody in your district I would like to appoint, is there somebody that you agree with, so that it is more evenly divided. But even so, there are five districts in Seattle and four districts that are not. So even then, we still have a preponderance. So I think it gets back to the question that Councilmember asked earlier, you know, will the people that are going to be on this committee, like many of us have to do, you know, one minute I'm a flood district supervisor, and I have my flood supervisor, and then you take that off, and now I'm a council member, and pretty soon I'm a board member. So, you know, flexing their ability to say, and keep in mind that Seattle, as wonderful as it is, is not the epicenter of the entire county, and that there are other people who live and work outside the county, but also need to be taken into account. And if it's going to impact them more than other places in the county, that that really needs to be taken into concern. And, you know, one of the, one of the members brought up an issue today, I think kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it was on the beaver issue. That is a huge issue, and I have pictures I took yesterday.
I was going to tell them, we could have a whole session on beavers.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're not doing that. Councilmember Lambert.
And I have no, I have no new beaver coach.
We have had committee meetings on the beaver issue.
We have, and I have new pictures. But it is a serious issue. And unless you have to deal with it, those cute little things are so cute until they destroy everything. And how do you tell people who don't, who only see them as cute and adorable, that when they've destroyed everything, it's not so cute and adorable? And how do you deal with it? And unless you know that, you have no idea. So I think it's going to be important that whoever is ultimately on this committee, that they really have the prep talk of thinking outside of one city, but to the entire county.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. I want to get to Councilmember Upthegrove, but just in the interest of moving this along, hearing your concerns, Councilmember Von Reckbauer, but understanding the constraints of committee time, and it is, this committee's been, it's not the committee of the whole in the past. We have been added a whole bunch of substantive jurisdictional issues around parks, sewer. We are overwhelmed, and the July and August meeting schedules are tough. I would ask, hearing your concerns, and knowing that there could be a solution, because these are floors, not ceilings, on nominees, if we might be able to, if you'd be comfortable with, without recommendation, moving the, the members forward today, knowing that that's two weeks plus a week till I at least think about that. Okay, okay, all right. Thank you. Councilmember Upthegrove?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am, as a South Ender, along with my colleague, I appreciate his sentiments. I maybe don't have quite as much fear as I heard in his voice, in part because of the nine of us, you know, a majority of this county council's from outside Seattle, from the, you know, five of us are from rural and suburban areas, and and the chair of the committee is in a divided district. So I think if there were shenanigans based on geography that took place on the Charter Review Commission, the fact those come back to the council would, would provide some certainty. That being said, I think the point that I heard was broader about making sure that, that life experience is truly reflected in the, in the diversity, in the, the geographic diversity. And the, the numbers, districts, I'm sympathetic to how they can mean different things. For example, there's somebody from my district, they're the executive director of a Seattle-based nonprofit. I thought the example of the former councilwoman, serving a suburban area but living in Seattle. So these numbers kind of, at times, can be somewhat arbitrary, but I, I'm actually more troubled by the notion of the nine of us not being treated equally, especially if that threw it out of whack. And I don't, I don't know the backstory on that, but if having one council member get an additional appointment ended up skewing these even further, that would have been more problematic. So I wanted to express my concern about that, my, my empathy, but also just, I wanted to point out that we do have a majority of folks up here from outside our urban core. So I think if, like I said, if there was something that wasn't geographically balanced, we have a safety valve. But I would love to work with Councilman Von Reckbauer on, between now and full council, if there is identified needs or any changes.
Sorry, just very briefly. In addition, we put this list together quite some time ago. I mean, we've been working on this for over a year, and things have changed in that period of time. There's some topics that are extraordinarily hot now, that were merely, you know, simmering then, and things that, and so if we're going to take time and have conversations between now and another committee meeting, maybe we could consider that as well.
Councilman Von Reckbauer.
We passed this motion on to the full council without recommendation.
Thank you very much. It's been a force, and I take the motion as not, again, a concern about the substantive individuals and their qualifications and expertise, but the balance.
I am extraordinarily impressed with these, all these individuals who took the time to do it, some of whom I've known for 30 years, some I've just got to know for the last 30 minutes. But I want you to know, I, from, this is a process question, not a, not a personnel question, a process question. And I think you can appreciate that comment. And I want to thank each one of you for your willingness to serve.
Very good. Clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Balducci?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells?
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert?
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott?
Aye.
Councilmember Upthegrove?
Aye.
Councilmember Von Reckbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is eight ayes, no no's, one excuse.
Very good. We've given a recommendation that this be advanced without recommendation to the full council. It'll come two Mondays from now, although under our practices and procedures, there can be an additional courtesy delay if a member has it. And it seems like, Callie, that maybe the executive might want to get with Councilmember Von Reckbauer and others who have expressed concerns about regional balance on this, and see if there isn't anything that could be done there to work on that. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Mac, thank you. Thank you to all our members, and good luck.